Welcome to the February 12, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Najarian. Please rise, place your hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting.
Please remain standing for the invocation. As all of you know, I make an effort to keep our invocations ecumenical and topical, but tonight I ask that you indulge me as I draw inspiration from the letters of St. Paul to the Church of Corinth. In Corinthians 13:13, a well-known passage from the New Testament, St. Paul writes, "And now these three remain: faith, hope, and love; but the greatest of these is love." Regardless of our individual faith or religion, we live in a society where we cannot ignore the commercialism of Valentine's Day this Thursday, but let us look beyond the pink hearts and boxes of candy and remind ourselves of this important message, of the importance and endurance and universal message of love. Let us love one another as colleagues, friends, and neighbors. Let us pause and remind ourselves of the very special people in our lives, how much they mean to us. Let us return the love that has been given to us unconditionally from our families and let that love pervade all that we put our minds to doing and problems we try solving. We pray for this gift that is so simple and for peace and prosperity for our city of Glendale. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the February 12, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Friday, February 8, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
Next item is presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. is agenda preview for the meetings of February 19, 2013.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for the Glendale Housing Authority for February 19th, we have no business agenda items. That evening for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 p.m., we have one item under consent, Director of Public Works. This is regarding the 2012 Competitive Tree Planning Grant Program and 2012 Windstorm Recovery Project and Youth Employment Plan. Under action items, we have three: City Treasurer, this is the City Treasurer Quarterly Investment Review as of December 31, 2012; Interim Director of Information Services; and Fire Chief, Annual Maintenance Service for the Fire Company Inspections iPad Application; and lastly, Chief of Police, this is regarding the Glendale Police Department Crime Summary, and this is a report to the City Council. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have some visitors from Rosarito Beach, our sister city, as well as the president of the Rosarito Beach Glendale Sister City Association, so would you please come to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, and councilmembers, city manager, and staff. My name is Alfred Olivares, I'm the president of your sister cities, Mexico Sister Cities Committee, which is Rosarito Beach, as well as Tlaquepake. One day I'm gonna test you, see how many of you can say that. But, as you know, our relationship has been kind of in a low cycle for the past two, three years. Tourism had been hit hard in Mexico, so that affected a lot of relationship issues. But I'm here today to introduce Antonio Ruiz. He is the new president for Rosarito Beach. There's, I've seen a lot of new activity. I've seen, I go to Rosarito Beach probably every month, and I will be going on different matters for the next six or eight months, and so I can tell you that Rosarito Beach has improved a lot, tourism is going back. And so I'm really glad to introduce Antonio Ruiz, who will introduce himself and tell you some of the plans that we might have. So with that, here's Antonio Ruiz. Thank you.
Hello, it's a pleasure. My name's Antonio Ruiz, I'm the president of the Rosarito Beach Sister Cities Association, and on behalf of Mayor Javier Robles Aguirre, he wants to give his sense of his regards and his enthusiasm and happiness to be part of Glendale as a sister city. And we have plans on having events, especially with Glendale, maybe a cultural exchange. We want the mayor to come over, and maybe in a few weeks, to come and speak and introduce himself formally. And we look forward to working with Glendale and making sure that everybody knows that our city is the safest city in Baja California North. We have a great staff and a great administration, working hard. So thank you so much for having me today.
Well, thank you very much, Antonio. And yeah, we have had a great relationship with Rosarito Beach. Just about everyone on the dais has been there, except for Ms. Friedman, who keeps wanting to go. I'm gonna have to personally take her down there. But anyway, we've had a great relationship, including Police Department, Fire Department, all the different things that we've done throughout the year, so we're looking forward. I'm happy to see you in your new post and looking forward to continuing our mutual endeavors.
Great, well, I appreciate it.
Pleased to have you here tonight.
And we'll see you soon.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, please.
Next, the City Council and staff comments.
Mr. Friedman.
I wanted to first mention a few of the events that I went to, to acknowledge the organizers and congratulate them for having great events. And then I have a question for the City Attorney afterwards. I attended the American Business Women's Association Heart of Business Expo that was held this weekend at the Elks Lodge. It was a great group of maybe 50, 60 powerful women, with their own businesses primarily, networking, helping each other, supporting each other, and learning together. I was very honored to be able to speak to them, and I congratulate them, particularly Lori Hartwell, who's one of the organizers of that event. I also attended the Armenian Medical Society's annual gala. It was a wonderful event. I don't think anybody left before 11:30 at night. Everyone was having so much fun. It's a great group, a great group of doctors and dentists and people in the health industry, so congratulations to them. And lastly, I attended, along with Mr. Najarian, the opening of the Live Well Senior Lounge at Glendale Adventist Medical Center. And this is a wonderful facility for seniors, which is anyone 55 or above, so a lot of us qualify. Not me, but many people. My husband's almost there. He finds it hard to believe, but he's on his way. Guillaume, if you're listening, I apologize for that, for outing you. But it's a great place for seniors to be able to drop in and find out about wellness primarily, about how to keep themselves well. There are computers for them to use and people to help them, and it's really all about keeping them well and nurturing body, mind, and spirit. Congratulations to Glendale Adventist and to Denise Miller, who's really instrumental in that program. So my question for Mr. Garcia has to do with a question that came up at one of our city commission meetings. One of the commissioners had expressed concern about the role that city commissioners should or shouldn't play in our upcoming elections. And I wanted to ask you if city commissioners are not allowed to participate in elections the way that other citizens are, if they can't host campaign events, if they can't support candidates. Can you give us some clarity on that?
Sure, Councilmember Friedman, members of council. Other than the prohibition from any city commissioner using city resources in conjunction with a campaign, or using his or her title in conjunction with an endorsement or with a respective campaign, there are no other restrictions. Unlike city employees, there are no restrictions from contributing, volunteering, hosting, fundraising, or anything of the sort. So that's the shortened.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, and I think we need to be clear about that, because we're trying to encourage people to be involved in our elections and the civic process, and I don't want people to feel that they should be reluctant, or that it's somehow unethical, or they should be afraid to do that. So I would appreciate if we could send a memo perhaps to our commissioners, or just a short email telling them that they are absolutely free to participate in the upcoming election. And I think that some of our commissioners are, I know that some of our commissioners are running for office, and you certainly can't get any more political than that. So they should also know that there's no problem with that, and for all of our commissioners, that they are absolutely welcome and encouraged to participate.
I will send a memo to the commissioners explaining what I just explained, that there are no prohibitions from participating in campaigns other than using city resources.
Okay, and if you could CC that as well.
I'll CC the council as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Menuchyan and Mr. Najarian.
I just wanna remind everyone that Arbor Day is March 5, and Arbor Day is being organized by Glendale Beautiful. I was up on my bike again over the weekend, and I did make it up to the Experimental Forest. There's a lot of big trees and some little ones. I took some pictures, but certain areas were very muddy, and I usually hesitate going up on the trails on muddy days because it ruins the trails. But I did see truck tires actually up there that had gone through the muddy areas, and they kinda had ruined the grading of the trail, so I was a little taken aback by that. But the Experimental Forest was very interesting. I do have some pictures, but I didn't get a chance to get it to you. There was a bench that was covered up. There was, in that area, there was a lot of dead wood. I don't know if people are aware of it, the trees that have fallen down, and there was a bench over there. It seemed like someone had taken a newspaper up there, sat down on the bench, read the newspaper, and then hung up the newspaper all over the tree. So that was a surprise as well. I didn't expect that. There's a lot of debris up there. I wonder if it's a fire hazard. But either way, I will be going up there on the Trail Safety Patrol actually, this weekend on Sunday. And on my way up there, I did run into Will and Kent, who are patrolling the area, and I wanna thank them for their volunteer hours. And I wanna reemphasize that if you're willing to donate a tree, it's $45, a 15-gallon tree. If you're willing to donate it, please donate it for Arbor Day, to Glendale Beautiful, and request them to place that tree in the Experimental Forest. As Mr. Weissman said last week in 2005, parts of the forest were burned down, so it would be great if we can repopulate the areas more than what it's been done so far. And the work that's been done, I wanna commend everyone that's been up there and working hard to replant the forest, but more needs to be done. So donate trees for special events, special people, or just special days like Arbor Day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Najarian.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Last week, we budgeted several hundred thousand dollars towards the development of our city website. And this weekend, I had the opportunity to discuss some issues with residents of northwest Glendale. One of them was the proliferation of coyotes, and in some cases, aggressive coyotes. Apparently, there's a pack that jumped the six-foot walls of Grandview Cemetery and are pretty much terrorizing the neighborhood. So not to get into the whole issue of coyote control, we know that coyotes play an important part in the ecological balance of our city and our wilderness areas. In the development of our website, I would like, is our IT director here? Where is he? There he is. Hi, John. John Taktine, our IT director. I'd like to know if we could create a module where residents, either directly or indirectly through either parks or the police department, can report unusual activities by coyotes or other animals, where perhaps a little map of Glendale could identify with a pin or a little symbol. So residents of the area could be put on the alert that there's some aggressive coyotes nearby. Take extra care with your pets and make sure your food isn't out. And I guess that would go with bears, because we get bears, and cougars as well, and sorts of other wildlife that, not in an attempt to eradicate them, but to put the neighborhood on notice so we could have less fatal interaction between our pets and themselves and whatnot.
Something of a crime map.
Like a crime map where you could, you know, go to your neighborhood and say, oh my gosh, there's a report of an aggressive coyote, or several aggressive coyotes. I'm gonna take Fifi in tonight and make sure that she's safe.
It's certainly something we can look into. It shouldn't be too big a deal to do.
As well, and let's make a broader statement, if I could, that if any other residents have great ideas on how we could use our website, feel free to contact anyone on the council, and we'll be sure to pass that to John, and we'll probably get some great ideas from our creative residents as to how we could make our lives better.
Send them on my way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, I have a number of things to talk about, but I'm gonna wait until next week, scag some of the meetings I had, because I wanna spend a few moments to, I want to adjourn the meeting this evening in honor of Frank De Luna, a 44-year resident of the city of Glendale and a close personal friend to many, many of us. Just a wonderful, wonderful person. He passed away. Frank was born in January 1931 in Monterrey, Mexico, and he began his path in the entertainment industry when he worked in circuses and tent shows. He then went on to get into radio broadcasting and met his future wife, Olivia, at a radio station. But Frank joined the U.S. Army during the Korean War, and he served for two years in the 73rd Armored Regiment, and was obviously involved in everything that a tanker does in a war setting. And obviously, he earned his citizenship, and that was one of his proudest achievements outside of his family. Then after the war, using the GI Bill, he went to move to San Antonio, Texas, continued in radio, and then came to Hollywood. He took acting classes at night using the GI Bill and soon started to work at TV and radio recorders in Hollywood, which is a very famous company of its time. He was a new apprentice. He then moved on to work at Capitol Records and CBS Records right into the early '60s. He recorded artists such as Harry Belafonte, and actually also sang with Steve Allen, who was a very famous television personality, as well as songwriter, et cetera. He also worked at the same time for the Voice of America, the radio network. And then in the 1960s, he met a guy named Herb Albert at A&amp;M Records. And he was there, he was there for 20 years, the '70s and '80s, and so he worked and recorded, mastered the albums actually, The Carpenters, Olivia Newton-John. I'm condensing all of the things that Frank did, by the way, we'd be here all night. But anyway, just some of the famous names. The Carpenters, Olivia Newton-John, Quincy Jones, The Police, et cetera, et cetera. And then he eventually, in 1990, he formed his own studio called Hot Tin Roof Studios and continued to work. Worked with Barry White, Luis Miguel, a Latino singer, and a number of other recording artists. And then later on, he started a studio here in the city of Glendale. He worked with the Latin rock and electronic movement. But he was just a wonderful, wonderful man. He enjoyed traveling, especially to Spain, and I always talked to him about that. One of his daughters is a very well-known and accomplished flamenco dancer. And he had many hobbies. He always bowled at Jewel City Bowl, a member of a lot of leagues. But most important, he took great pride in Glendale. This is, he always said, his hometown. And he was one of the founding members of the Ross Moyn Homeowners Association, where he advocated for neighborhood traffic and pedestrian safety and so forth. He died of natural causes on February 3, and he survived by his wife, four children, and three grandchildren, some of who are in the chambers today. But Glendale lost a wonderful person, and someone who was just a delight to be around, very positive, always wanting to do positive things, and so I'm sad to have to read his, a little bit about his life. But tonight, we will adjourn the city council meeting in his honor. Anything else, any other comments? Okay, next, please.
Next item on the agenda is the consent items, including minutes following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Do I have a motion? Consent calendar at 5. Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Right.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is oral communications, as listed on the agenda, but this is a portion reserved for three-minute events, event announcements. We will revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Okay, Alina Der Sarkisian, followed by Evelyn Horrigan.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and councilmembers. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Alina Der Sarkisian, and I'm here with the Glendale Adventist CEO, Kevin Roberts. We wanted to tell you about the Downtown Dash, which is a 5K run-walk, which will take place on March 10, which is a Sunday, and this event helps benefit the stroke center and education in the community. Stroke is the third-largest leading cause of death in the U.S. and the second-leading cause of death in the San Fernando Valley, and this event brings together business partners, stroke survivors, and participants to show their support for the hospital and stroke awareness. Last year, the Dash had nearly 1,700 participants with over 150 volunteers and 55 Dash teams, and our fastest runner finished in 14 minutes and 54 seconds. So we really encourage you to join us by signing up at glandeldowntowndash.com. We encourage you to form a team, and also prizes will be given out. So now I'd like to introduce Kevin Roberts to share more with you.
Thank you, Alina. Good evening, council. One thing, I've been here for a little over a year at Glendale Adventist, and one thing that I am very proud of is the Stroke Center at Glendale Adventist. We talk about different levels of care. Primary care is when you go to your doctor's office and get your headache taken care of. Secondary care is when you go to an emergency room or to a hospital and have very basic services, appendectomy, normal delivery of a child, maybe managing pneumonia. Those are the secondary services. Then you have what we call tertiary services, which get kind of into the stratosphere of medicine, open-heart surgery, neonatal intensive care units. Those sorts of things are considered the tertiary realm. But one thing that you may not realize is that you have in Glendale Adventist a quaternary center in stroke care. We have some of the most advanced technologies in the world for managing stroke. They can take these tiny little catheters, not much larger than a thread, and snake them through your brain, and correct all kinds of maladies and conditions around stroke. So I'm here, of course, to brag a little bit about that, if you don't mind, on behalf of Glendale Adventist. But that's what the Downtown Dash is dedicated to, is to managing stroke services. And some of the things that the funds raised from previous dashes have gone toward is an advanced mobile stroke education unit, stroke medication management clinic, educational exhibits, and multilingual educational materials. So we take the funds raised from this event and really kind of embed the program into our community and make sure everyone has access. So I hope to see you all out there in your sneakers. It's only 3.2 miles, you can walk it, right Dave?
Sure.
Piece of cake, okay. So thank you very much, and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great event, and let me say, there's also, and I've mentioned this in the past, there's really sub-events going on. In my particular case, I've been first every year from the starter's point to Porto's for breakfast. I've been number one, time after time. No one's beat me on those kind of chilly mornings. Evelyn Horrigan, and followed by Leon Mayer.
Hello, I have two announcements to make today. First is the World Day of Prayer service. This is sponsored by Church Women United of Glendale. It takes place on Saturday morning, March 2, I'm sorry, and it will be at Salem Lutheran Church. Refreshments at 9:30 and the service at 10:00. It's an hour long. The Women of France put together this program based on "I was a stranger, you welcomed me." This is a community-wide event, non-denominational, interfaith. Men, as well as women, are invited, so please come, learn, and pray with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second event is the 18th Annual Glendale, I'm sorry, the Glendale Foothill Crop Hunger Walk. This takes place on Sunday afternoon, March 3. Registration is at 1 o'clock, and we step out at 1:30, rain or shine. We invite you and all of those, both here and those at home, to join us for this 18th Annual Crop Hunger Walk. You can register onsite or preregister at www.cwsglobal.org/GlendaleCA. There's a number of churches already signed up, but this is a community-wide, interfaith, non-denominational event. And so when you register, preregister, or register at Walk Day, please bring a can of food. Food donations count as well. We raise food, we raise fun and food for four pantries. Bailey Human Care, the pantry in Tahanga, through Sunland Tahanga, La Crisena, and Montrose. And in Glendale, Catholic Charities Loaves and Fishes, the Seventh-day Adventist Pantry in the Share Our Cells Store, the Salvation Army's Pantry, and vouchers for the Meals on Wheels program. And all of those pantries serve not only Glendale, but also clients from Eagle Rock, Burbank, and Glassell Park. In addition to funds and canned goods raised for the pantries, we also raised funds for the food voucher program for needy students at Glendale Community College.
Thank you, Mayor.
Part of the donations go to disaster relief, refugee assistance, poverty prevention, work of church world service, and interfaith alliance of faith-based communities and non-faith-based organizations such as CARE.
Okay, thank you.
Please, please join us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can come back next week also. Leon Mayer, followed by Myra Kendall.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Friends at a Library, the various historical societies of Glendale and La Crisena, as well as the library itself. Now, we have an event that I've already talked about, and it's been in the news press, and it's been in the various libraries, sublibraries around town. It is Art Coburn, who has written the book, The Great Crisena Valley Flood, New Year's Day 1934. And it's been co-authored with Mike and Pam Lawler, who've been very active in Montrose and La Crisena events. And this book talks about how, on New Year's Day 1934, everybody who lived in La Crisena were sitting down for a New Year's Day celebration. A cloudburst occurred in the mountains. The ground had been denuded because of previous fires, and a historic flood occurred. And there was damage, and there was tragedy, and there was heroics. And Mr. Coburn has researched this, and he's written about it, and it's a fine book, and that will be on February 20, a week from tomorrow. So come, enjoy it. It'll be a very interesting book, and it's part of the Montrose Centennial Society Celebration, which starts that Saturday. Now, we also want to remind everybody that One Book, One Glendale, which we started several years ago, in which we feature a prominent author talking about an award-winning book coming to Glendale and having the whole book coming to Glendale, and having the whole city of Glendale participate by being there, by reading the book, having their children read the book, and buying the book and having it autographed. And we're fortunate this year to have Hector Covar, famous Pulitzer Prize winner, LA Times columnist for many years, and he's written a book called "The Barbarian Nursery." So I'm not going to tell you what it's about, but it deals with local developments in our society. That covers a lot of territory. We urge you to come. And he will be interviewed by Gustavo Aralano. Now, Gustavo's been at our library a couple of times, and he's famous nationally. He's written a book called Taco USA, and another book. And he's going to kind of moderate Hector there at the podium. So come on the 14th of March, come to our library to get the book, and read the book, and buy the book. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Myra Kendall, followed by Sharon Wiseman.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and council people. Thank you, Mr. Menuchyan. I am the president of Glendale Beautiful. And you were so gracious to talk about our trees. I'll just give a few more details, if I may. Our meeting for the public is Tuesday, March 5th, at 10:00 o'clock at the Casa Adobe de San Rafael, the old, very nice building up on 1660 North Dorothy Drive in Glendale. And at that time, we present trees that have been donated in memory or honor of people, and have a little refreshment, and it's always a very nice time. And we have a, we're considered, I guess it's called a tree city of the U.S., and we have, we've planted over 7,000 trees, and this is our 63rd year of meeting, not for me, but for the organization. So we would welcome those, and if anyone interested in purchasing a tree in memory of or honor of somebody, they could contact probably the Parks Department, and they could refer you to either Gladys Wymore or myself on how to get those ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Wiseman.
I'm Mayor Quintero's council members and staff, and those listening. I'm Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale, and I'm here to invite everyone to two important meetings in La Crescenta. The first is regarding the proposed 710 extension, and is on Wednesday, February 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Rosemont Middle School, 4725 Rosemont Avenue in La Crescenta. Metro and Caltrans have identified five alternatives to quote "close the gap" between the 710 and the 210. Other plans, the alternatives are no build, transportation system, transportation demand management, bus rapid transit, light rail transit, and a freeway tunnel. Please join us to learn how the State Route 710 extension will affect the quality of life in the foothills and how you can take action. This is hosted by the Crescenta Valley Town Council, with support from La Conyada Flintridge City Council, Glendale City Council, and the No 710 Action Committee and knowon710.com. For further information, please contact CV Town Council member Frank Bait at Bait, that's B-E-Y-T, at ATT.net. Then the following evening, on Thursday, February 28th, the Crescenta Valley Community Association will hold a candidate forum for the upcoming April 2nd Glendale City Council election. The forum is at the La Crescenta Library, 2809 Foothill Boulevard in La Crescenta. Please join us for our informal discussion with the candidates. The Crescenta Valley Community Association meets the 4th Thursday of the month at 7:00. For more information about this event or the association, please contact Sharon Ragavachari at Sharon C-H-A-R-Y at gmail.com. And I have flyers for both events, if anybody is interested in those. And I would appreciate if you let your friends and neighbors know about these two opportunities to participate in our democracy and help shape the future of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda, under Action Items, is Director of Libraries at 8A, I'm sorry, Director of Libraries Arts and Culture, regarding Arts and Culture Plan for 2013-2018. 8A1 is a motion approving the plan.
Ms. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. While Annette comes to the podium to make the presentation, I will, by way of introduction, advise that this is the next step, and it's a big step, in the maturation of our arts and culture program. That is a priority for this city council. What will follow, as you'll hear, will be the specific work plan that will guide the investments that we make in our local culture, as that is a staple and really a touchstone as to who we are as a community. So, Annette, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm happy to be here on behalf of the Arts and Culture Commission to present the arts and cultural plan for your consideration and adoption. As Mr. Ochoa stated, this is a strategic plan for the city's investment in the arts for the next five years. So this is the big picture, the vision, and this is what sets the foundation for future arts programming. As you could see, for the last several months, the Arts and Culture Commission has engaged in discussions to develop this plan, and this is since the council redefined the commission's role and transitioned the commission to Library Arts and Culture. As you can see, we anticipate bringing the work plan, which Mr. Ochoa mentioned, which lays out the specific projects. At this point, we're just asking you to review the big picture and the vision. In addition to setting the big picture for, and vision for arts and culture, the council also wanted the commission to oversee the Urban Art Fund, but also develop an expenditure plan for this, along with some other responsibilities. And so the plan is divvied up into three areas, which I will discuss briefly with you, but I'm happy to answer questions as they come up. Now, these six goals combine the theme of civic leadership and improved communications and engagement with our community. Again, this sets the fundamental platform for more arts activity to take place in our community. And for each of these goals, objectives and strategies have been identified, and they also provide the framework for implementation of specific programs and projects. Now, that work plan is going to identify those specific programs, which we will bring back to you. And of course, in order to have a robust program, we need to identify the resources that we have available. The commission's focus is leveraging our existing funding sources with new funding sources, such as grants, so that we can jumpstart new programs and projects, but also continue them for the long term. One of those resources is the Urban Art Fund. To date, we have collected 1.4 million, and we anticipate collecting an additional $1 million. And in this forecast, we've only included projects that are in plan check, and these are the larger projects. Of course, there are a plethora of other projects that are in discussion, or they're much smaller, but we're not taking those into consideration because they still haven't submitted for plan check, and we don't want to throw off our forecast for how much we'll have in the fund. The commission also identified potential partners. This is not an all-inclusive list. This is just what the commission identified. So these are all the organizations that we could partner with, so we can implement some of these programs and projects. And of course, there are a lot of other organizations out there that we'll be looking to partner and exchanging our resources. Of course, there is a lot of opportunities and possibilities for public art in our community. Usually, the first one that comes to mind is permanent art, and that's usually sculptures, the second and last photograph are sculptures that are in our community. Another type of permanent art is murals. The second picture is from the West Hollywood Library, which is by Shepard Ferry. He was the artist and graphic designer who did all the designs for Obama's first campaign, and that's one of the, I think, most celebrated murals recently in all of L.A. Could also be something big, such as the Glow Festival in Santa Monica, which is an art event attracting 100,000 people to, as simple as Shakespeare in the Park, which is something that most communities embrace and have on an ongoing basis. And also have series of performances, such as the grand performances in downtown L.A., or the Jazz Series, and Washington DC Sculpture Garden. And also temporary art. The middle photograph is of temporary art displays that are put up in a Chicago subway system. So again, there's a lot of possibilities for what we could do in our community in terms of public art. But the plan also takes into consideration and plans for ongoing maintenance and capital improvements of art in order to secure the city's investment in the art, but also to ensure that our arts are going to be enjoyed by future generations to come. That is essentially the plan that we're asking you to adopt today. But the next step, actually on Thursday, the commission will be meeting, and they're going to start discussing their work plan. Whereas this plan is the bigger vision for arts and culture in the community, the annual work plan is what's going to give you the specific programs, the allocations, the budgets, and how we're going to monitor and track that. And we hope to bring that back to the council in a few months, so that we can begin implementing in July.
I think that's important to point out, because at that point, the city council is the decision-making, policymaking body of the city. The Arts and Culture Commission is an advisory body to the council, but their work and their time that is spent and invested is going to be, I think, really only as effective and useful as the framework that this council gives them vis-à-vis this ongoing plan. And so, to the extent that this is a first step, it's a high-level step, but certainly a very important step to get the ball rolling in this direction.
Thank you. And also, to prepare the commission for Thursday's meeting, we prepared a survey of neighboring cities to show them what some of the other communities that have a similar percent for our program, how they're allocating their money, how much they're spending, and we were going to be discussing some of that on Thursday as well. That concludes my presentation. On behalf of the Arts and Culture Commission, I want to thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? No? Okay. I have one speaker card. Teri Dever.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff. I am Teri Dever. I am the current Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, and I just wanted to take a moment to emphasize how much time and energy and thought that we and staff put into this, into this plan. We've really called upon our collective expertise, our knowledge of the arts and cultural community here in Glendale, and certainly our vision for the future of arts and culture in Glendale. And it's also informed, as you noted in the presentation, that through a series of forums from last year and public comment, we've also taken into consideration greatly the input from our arts and cultural community and the community at large as well in putting together this plan. So we recommend that you support it. We're really looking forward to taking the next step, which is the starting onto the actual work plan, implementing these strategies, implementing and refining the art fund, so that we can continue to really to support our creative community and our creative economy here in the city of Glendale. So thank you. We hope that you'll support and approve this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman, first.
Well, first, I want to really thank and commend our commission under Chair Dever for the hard work that they did. I know that this is, what the public is seeing is really an overview of a much longer policy document that took a tremendous amount of time from the commissioners and as well as from staff. So I want to thank all of you for your hard work. And I know you had retreats, and you had discussions, and you really put a lot of time into this. And believe me, it shows when you look at that policy document. And I'm very, very pleased to see this. Since I've been on council, as some of you know, I've been really pushing for the commission to become a body that really recommends policy to support the arts in many ways throughout Glendale. And this is the beginning, this is a document that really sets the stage for how we, as a city, are going to support and promote the arts. So I'm very, very pleased. I think the plan is really very well-balanced, very well-thought-out, and I'm looking forward to that next stage and seeing the work plan and seeing that really go forward. And I guess I would just say, let's, you know, not forget in all of this, that we also are very open and looking for recommendations about how we, as a city, can incorporate the arts into the functioning of the city, whether it's through public works projects that we're doing, or through the library, and they're very much, of course, you know, already on board with that. But we have a lot of different city departments, and are there ways for those city departments, through their everyday functioning, to also incorporate and support the arts? That's something that I would like to see reflected in that work plan. You know, even if part of the work plan is to ask city departments to give that a thought, and come to the commission with their recommendations of how they think they can do that. So again, thank you all very much for your work. It's very, very exciting, and I'm also happy that, for the first time, we have an art fund. And, you know, it'll be very, I think, gratifying for the community going forward to seeing that implemented and that money spent. I guess my time is up, so I will stop talking.
I'll give you a few more minutes.
That's okay. It's, you know, sometimes having the time limit, it really makes you focus what you want to say, so thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, I also am very happy. It's been a long, long struggle, I think is the best way to put it. The Arts and Culture Commission has worked long and hard, along with the staff, to put this together. They certainly have gotten, received plenty of input from multiple, multiple sources, and I'm very happy that they also took time to research Santa Monica, Palm Desert, Pasadena, all of the other cities that are doing, actively pursuing this type of thing. So congratulations. I watch the commission meetings from time to time. You do a great job in chairing the committee, Ms. Devers, and we're on our way with this, so it's very positive. Mr. Mayor, move 8A1. There are second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
AP is Director of Administrative Services, Finance, Regarding Fiscal Year 2012-13 Second Quarter Financial Update for the Period Ending December 31, 2012. AP is motion to note and file the report. AP2 is a resolution appropriating $883,132 to fund second quarter budget adjustment to the originally adopted fiscal year 2012-13 budget.
Right, and I believe the Director of Finance... The Director of Finance has a very artistic presentation.
Yes.
Going to.
Oh, counter. Yeah, stick figures. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's with great pleasure we are presenting the mid-year update, of which was a very trying year budgetarily in terms of where we were and where we've come and the progress we've made. So I want to give you an update on where we're at, and give you a little bit of a projection where we think we're going to end up the year. Go through some proposed budget adjustments. We haven't done those for several years, but there's some that, more or less housekeeping that we want to bring to you for adjustment purposes. We're also going to talk a little bit about the forecast for next year and some of the discussion about that. We're going to talk a little bit, and we, I mean, it's Mr. Ochoa, myself, and Mr. Tectonian are doing a tag team this evening in presenting these 62 slides of information for you.
Rapid-fire succession.
Rapid-fire succession. So without further ado, in a nutshell, our revenues are doing pretty well in terms of where we expected to be and where we actually are. We've received 48.9 million, and I'll show you the detail of that in a minute. Our property tax and sales tax are up slightly over last year, which is good news. Some of the areas of challenge, still, we had to reduce the revenue we received from the PEG fund because of the charter lawsuit, so that is 500,000 that we can no longer collect in the general fund. One point in terms of our property tax, there's still some uncertainty around the additional property tax that we had plugged into the budget from the dissolution or redevelopment in... in terms of the property that came back out of the agency areas into, back to the tax district number one or the general fund taxing entity. So we're watching that, we're working with Phil Lanza fame and his team in terms of how that unfolds. So there's a little bit of uncertainty in terms of the amounts that we think we will get towards the end of the year there. But overall, as you can see in the various categories, we're doing quite well. One major exception from this year, from last, as you can see in the transfers, and if you recall, we had made the decision on the electric fund transfer to the general fund that that happens at the end of the year. In previous years, that transfer was made 1/12 each month, and so at this point in the year, we would be roughly 50% collected back to the general fund from the electric utility.
And I think that's separate, it's important to point out, that is separate and distinct from the language that has been put forth as measure B in the general cleanup for GAAP compliance, general accounting principles compliance, as it pertains to the general fund transfer. This is just the timing of that transfer, and council has already made that policy decision.
And just to clarify on how the transfer occurs, and I know there's been some confusion on what was said when we presented the CAFR, but again, the transfer is booked as an operating expense out of the electric fund, and that's done in accordance with GAAP. And again, part of that cleanup is, and what we're proposing is, to make the charter mirror what generally accepted accounting principles dictate. As it stands now, the definitions of what the surplus fund and revenue funds are don't meet GAAP rules in terms of what a true fund for accounting purposes is. In addition to that, the, as I've stated a number of times, the transfer has to come out of operations, and the way the charter is worded out of the surplus fund would be contrary to generally accepted accounting principles. So I wanted to make sure that there's clarity on that. We have the auditors here if there's any further clarity needed, but I know there's been a lot of discussion on that point and wanted to clarify how the transfer is treated in terms of accounting purposes. We move on to expenditures. We are doing quite well in terms of where we're at during the year. We're less than 50%. I'll go into the detail in a minute. And one point to note is, the fire department, as you'll see, is over 50%, and that's in part due to some of the expenditures for the retirement incentives that we offered to the GFFA that were approved by council back in July and September. We haven't brought those forth to you for an adjustment, and that's one of the proposed adjustments tonight, so that will impact what has been charged to the fire department thus far. So we'll talk a little bit about, more about that adjustment, but it was for the 18 firefighters to retire. So in terms of details, you can see most departments are at 50% or under it, with the exception of the fire department, so everybody's holding the line in terms of where we are expenditures in the general fund.
And I think that just has to be pointed out to all of our staff, from the executives to the managers to the line staff, the conscientious attitude and the embrace of what the council's directive has been to try to stretch that last dollar. When you look at where we are at the mid-year point, we are under budget on the expenditures, and I'd like to say that that comes straight from the executive team, but truly, it's something that's been integrated throughout the whole organization, and all of our people are to be commended.
So again, to just to point out, the percentages, the fire department is over budget, but there are reasons for that, and the other cost savings, we hadn't even programmed in until December in terms of getting those booked, so there'll be a catch-up towards as we go through the later part of the year. So we're confident they'll come in under budget. We've had numerous meetings with the chief and his staff, so it's more or less an anomaly at this point.
And also, just for the public's consumption, but certainly the council's aware, unlike in previous years, this budget reflects the removal of longtime vacant but funded positions. This is the true depiction, not that it wasn't before, but we always had those, that cushion within the budget that we could then plug in a savings number. But through the direction and the work of the management team, direction by staff and work of the management team, we have eliminated those positions, and so what you're seeing is, as I say, that the truest, best depiction of what our budget truly is.
Just wanted to go through, as we have done in the past, just to let everybody know what our cash balances are as of the end of December. The total cash within the citywide pool managed by the treasurer is $383 million. Breakdown through the major funds, general fund and electric, and sewer and so forth. You will notice, we have reported in the past, the water fund is negative cash, and it is negative cash with operations. However, as you recall, we sold the bonds in December, so that reflects about $30 million in bond funds credit to the water fund. So not to mislead anybody, we still have a negative cash in the operations of the water fund. And you can see the different fund categories towards the bottom of the remaining cash balances for the total in the portfolio. So as we move towards the end of the year, what we're projecting in terms of where we end up, the, excuse me, as you recall, we had programmed a use of $1 million in fund balance. As we look towards our forecast, we should be fine in terms of where we end up. Revenues, if we take into account will be, account the use of fund balance, we would be with a slight deficit, but with the use of fund balance, we would have a slight operating surplus. However, it's pretty close to where we are in estimates, so.
Takeaway being that far-right hand column, that with the employment of the strategies adopted by the council, your budget for this year is operationally balanced. That's what the projection is.
So looking towards where does that leave us at the end of the year in terms of our total fund balance? If we program, or take the use of fund balance out and put in the slight operating deficit, we still ended at approximately $58.3 million, or 35%, over 35%, which is our target fund balance in reserves, with the floor still being at 30%. So that's good news in terms of how we think we'll end up the year. This will, it may change as we learn more, and we'll report that back to you at the third quarter update. I mentioned earlier some of the adjustments, the proposed adjustments that we have in the general fund is $774,000. That's primarily, as I mentioned, the retirement incentives that council approved for the GFFA, and it was designated for deposits to the retiree health savings plan.
And those were separate and distinct from the incentives that were offered to the rest of the employees. That's why they're showing up here.
At the time, we didn't have a head count in what the total was, which is why we're bringing it back for appropriation at this point in time. Again, this, the expenses for this have been included in the department's operations, so we'll pull that out and put it in another classification so it doesn't impact the fire department's expenditures. The second proposed adjustment is for the Parks and Recreation Fund, not the general fund, for use at the skate park in terms of utilizing some of the fee increases that they have used and extending some of the services offered at the skate park. The adjustment's made out by using some of the revenues of $25,000 and the addition of use of some of the fund balance in the recreation fund, so for a total of $46,000. The third adjustment, again, is the Recreation Fund for $50,000, and it's utilizing additional laborers to help out with some of the needs that they have on the weekends at some of the park facilities. Jess Duran is here, if you have any questions specific to that. They're not large amounts, but we did feel that we should bring those forward for adjustments.
And this really is a true-up, as you see on the $50,000, the $12,000 on the next slide, you know, the 50, or I'm sorry, the 46, the previous slide, and even the larger number with the fire department, you know, these are on $165 million general fund budget, $700 million total budget. I know that the council looks at every last detail, and these details are important to us, but I want to point out again for the community that we're talking about fractions of a single percent in terms of what these variations are, and the takeaway being that we look at those fractions of a percent. I mean, the detail is that important to us because the resources are that scarce.
And the last adjustment is more or less a housekeeping, a cleanup of $12,000 to be used out of the Development Impact Fund for books. Again, not a lot of money, but as the funds received, quite some time ago, was decided to program those monies at this point in time.
All right, so let's take a look at the year. Are there any questions about the current year on, and that's good stuff, to the extent that if some of that seems very familiar to you and to the community, it's because it was very similar, and I think you'll see that there's a very familiar ring to the entire report that we're providing you, similar to what we did at first quarter. Here at mid-year, we'll do it again at third quarter as we get into the budget, and the idea is to set an ongoing expectation for, of both the community as well as the council and, quite frankly, the staff, as we hold folks accountable for that budget and that goal attainment. As we look to next year, the worst, I believe, is indeed behind us, barring some unforeseen circumstance that nobody could anticipate. I think the information that, here, I'm going to mess this up. You can do that. They don't trust me with the technology. But the idea being that, you know, we'd like it to be better, but it could also be a whole lot worse. Our numbers on our revenue projections, we're meeting those expectations and in some cases exceeding those. The downside is because, as you know, that the federal government has kind of kicked the can down the road with the fiscal cliff. It's coming back up again in another six to eight weeks, I believe. The state government has adopted an overly optimistic depiction of its own revenues, and so next year's projections are a little bit squishy. You know, we would like them to be very solid, much the same way that this current fiscal year has been, but we don't know that. We hope that, but we don't know it. So we are going to remain conservative and be prepared for what comes down the line. That makes managing those operational costs all the more important. You know, we talk about structural balance, and we are approaching that structural balance as we look at the larger picture, our OPEB liability. That's something that, under Gatsby, is going to be presented on our financial statements soon enough, and there are some elements of that that we have and know, very few, if any, government organizations have the ability to balance that out if we are going to count that number on the, you know, large sums for other post-employment liabilities that will exist. Are we making strides in that direction? Absolutely, and the council, next year, will be presented with options and choices to severely curb what that liability is. But make no mistake, one of the biggest impacts on the amount of that liability in the future will be federal, the federal healthcare mandate and how that impacts local employers like the city of Glendale. So, you know, we focus on the structural, we keep that in the background, but certainly at this point, we're very much focused on, in the foreground, on the operational balance. And that's taking a look at our cost of doing business. This notion of the variables and trade-offs and timetables, we do have new development. We've benefited from all of that new development. The council set the stage with the downtown specific plan. We've seen the fruits of that foresight come and be born in the downtown, but we all know that development cycles come and go. And so the idea that we are building on revenues that are returning revenues that we can count on year after year is important to us because development is cyclical. This notion of ROPS, we'll talk about in just a second, the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule that is hopefully approved by the department, the State Department of Finance, will hopefully solidify that which we can expect from the remains of the former redevelopment agency. That is a key component to our ongoing operational balance. Internal service funds, our cost of doing business, like any other business, and we're just in the business of government, that we have workers' compensation costs, liability costs, technology costs, we need to manage all of those costs. And what do we, we balance those with? Will we balance them with the organizational priorities that the council adopts? The council has its policies and priorities, we try to meet those, the departments have their strategic goals, and when we apply all these resources, the idea is that departments succeed or fail, executives are doing good or doing as good as we hope, the staff are motivated or not, all predicated on their achievement of what the goals are that are adopted by the city council. And so it is, as we have said before, an evaluation year. Next year will really become, 1314 will become that new base year as we figure out what the organizational capacity is for Glendale. On the next slide, what are we looking at going forward? Well, the brutal fact is that on the, if we are going to increase the amount of funding that we put into those internal service funds, the ISFs, workers' comp, liability, and technology, if we were to move in those directions and we get no support from the state in the way of returning revenues that once belonged to Glendale, if we get no support from the state in that arena, then we could be out of balance, operational balance in the coming fiscal year as much as 4%. On the flip side, the, or 4%, $4 million. On the flip side, the solutions that we would bring to you really are twofold. If we continue the practice that we have in place this year of maintaining the existing balances in liability, in workers' comp, in the internal service fund for technology, for the Information Services Department, then, and we get at least $1 to $1.2 million back from the Department of Finance on our ROPS, well, then we're balanced next year, and we're flat in the coming fiscal year. That would be ideal, as you see that last bullet point, the relativity of success and how we define success. I can tell you, I'm very proud of our employees, that they come back to really understand and recognize, or at least the vast majority of our employees, that, you know, success today in 2013 means not having to reduce service to residents, not having to cut further into our human resources such that we can't deliver on that basic value proposition to our employees, to our customers. Yes, sir?
Ms. Ochoa, that goes to the point that I've read in the paper about, and I hear happened at Forum, that there were $4 million out of WAC. You said it right there. If we chose to go down that way, not, we're balanced. I guess we could go and pay, spend $5 or $6 million more in paving streets, and we'd be in the same hole.
Certainly, that's the policy choice that the council gets to make next year. From the standpoint, if you wanted to go put another $2 million...
I thought it was incumbent on the state, not on us.
On...
I mean, the $4 million deficit could happen if the state, if the state doesn't support us, not decisions that we make.
If the state doesn't support us, and if, and if we elect to put more money into those internal service funds. So if you directed to put another $2 million into workers' comp, another $1 million five into liability, and another $1 million into ISD, then I would come back to you and say, we need more money, or we need to cut additional programs. Or we can continue what we're doing this current fiscal year, which is basically flatline those. Don't gut them, don't gut those internal service funds, just don't put any new money into them. Continue to the same, the same level of investment. That has worked for us. We would like to put more money into those accounts, but if, my suspicion is that if I came to you and said, you know, we need to cut further into human services or into public safety or into infrastructure, as Mr. Weaver points out, you're going to tell me, well, if we made that policy decision in 1213, perhaps we should continue it in 1314.
How much, how much of the state's decision is subject to our...
We're counting on them for about $1 million on the repayment of the obligation, the cooperative agreement between the city and the redevelopment agency. Now, you recall last, before the end of redevelopment, the agency had been repaying the city to the tune of $6 million a year, $7 million, I think, of that last year. That was all wiped out by the state of California. Now, we're basically asking hat in hand for at least $1 million, $1 million four. We think in the application of the redevelopment cleanup bill, 1484, that we actually could be entitled to some additional repayment. But what we, I've become cynical in my old age that I think that the state may, may decide not to give us any more than they absolutely have to. So we're counting on a very conservative $1 million.
And if that $1 million were available, it could go any number of places?
The good, yes, sir. The good news is that you basically took the hard medicine in this current year, so anything we do get back from the state is found money.
So I just hope I don't read in the paper or hear in any debates from here on out that we're $4 million in the hole. The people who are saying that are listening here tonight rather than the president's State of the Union.
I would just leave, on this slide, one last point to you, and this notion that the actions to date give us options going forward. As just indicated, the council's taken the hard medicine up until now. As just indicated, the council's taken the hard medicine up until now. You've done everything that you needed to do by way of budget reform, both in the long term and the short term, scaling back the workforce, raising revenues where you absolutely needed to, and developing a very balanced streamlined organization such that you haven't been this streamlined and cost efficient, as you'll see later in more than a decade. So, really, we are getting to that point where we're boldly entering that new base year. But it's because of the things that you've done heretofore. There are many other cities that can't make that statement, and it's because, just as it is for you, it's because of the actions that they did not take versus the actions that you all have taken. So, let's talk a little bit about the organizational profile, and then we'll have John Taktalian literally run through the performance indicators. I'm sorry, I left out one thing. On principles of compensation management, this is something that was discussed as part of this year's budget, something that the council showed a tremendous amount of interest in. And so, we bring it to you in these principles with the idea that they will effectively form an administrative policy that animates the way that we go about our business in dealing with compensation. We are a service industry. We don't make widgets. Our costs are primarily, at least in the general fund, are people. And so, we have to manage how much those people do indeed cost. So, as you see on the slide here, and I won't read all these because I'm sure you can do it, the takeaway is from principle one is that we will find a balance between exceptional customer service, that empathy and respect to the customer with retaining and attracting quality city employees. Because talent does cost. We want to make sure that we have good people providing good service, and we hold them accountable for that. Number two is where we look at elements of employee compensation are going to be funded and secured for the long term. We have that operationally today. We are going to be looking at that structurally, especially as it pertains to OPEB, once the feds decide how the mandate is going, the healthcare mandate is going to be applied. We talk about being competitive with the market to the best that we can by calibrating what the respective positions, what the positions are within the organization for the different classifications, particularly as those key classifications really animate the way that we provide service and what services we provide, what businesses we are in. We talk about internal organizational equity so that the workforce truly does reflect what the priority and mission of the city is. Merit compensation and bonus compensation. And please note that we are not giving cost of living increases in this current year, and I think with the flat expectations of the coming fiscal year, we are not looking at compensation increases there, nor are we looking at bonuses. But again, as this is a living document, to the extent that what we are advocating is a, maybe a pivot on the paradigm of public compensation, that truly that which you receive is due to that which you have performed, that you provide a level of service and you provide it in such a way that that directly ties back to how you are rewarded in that transaction between employer and employee. We start talking about in slide, or I'm sorry, in principle number six, that employees will participate in their funding, the funding of the retirement. As you know, Glendale does more. Glendale employees pay more of the cost of their own employment than anybody else in our region, as much or more than anybody else in the state. And it's something that has not been easy to do, but something that you should be proud of doing nonetheless. We talk about priors and making sure that all of our assumptions reflect actuarial horizons that are practical and realistic. And the last, I'm sorry, the second to last two are targets, that in our general fund, again, a large bulk of the general services that we provide to the community, 75% of those costs of our appropriations, not more than 75%, go towards the cost of personnel. We are not there yet. That is where we want to go. That is what we believe to be the evidence of a very balanced and streamlined, ongoing streamlined organization. I would submit to you at this point, based on the cuts that you've made, increases in revenue will help balance or help achieve that target, because we're at about 79% right now. I expect that just with the organic growth in revenue, we will reach that 75%. Similarly, when you look at management being streamlined and lean from a management perspective, not more than 25% of that 75% shall go to management costs. We want to make sure that we have appropriate span of control, but that we truly are not top-heavy. Finally, that we will make sure we monitor time accruals so that people don't walk out of the organization when they go on to that transition from, after giving us their career, that we don't have any of the headaches or heartaches that other organizations have found themselves in with huge amounts of money being allocated to those retirees in the form of payouts. Now, we'll jump into organizational profile, and we'll kick it over to John. You've seen this before, and I only bring it up to you just to make sure that we become comfortable in the jargon and vernacular of the way that we view this organization. So, we look at our total population, our total full-time equivalent employees, both in the general fund and citywide. We had been as low as 1585 full-time employees in this current fiscal year. As we've gone through all of the reorganization over the last couple of months, we've had to add people back just to make sure that we're able to sustain the level of service that our residents and businesses are enjoying. So, right now, we are at 1605, and we're going to hold that target, hold that number through the end of this current fiscal year. You see that our appropriations, both as total budget and general fund, have gone down significantly. You see that the residents served per full-time equivalent have gone up significantly, both in the general fund as well as in all funds, and with the per capita that we're spending by way of budget on all of our different residents. Next up, this just shows you how we group services, public safety, public works, utility, transit, community development, quality of life, being your soft services, your parks, your libraries, and then administration, internal service. Some change, as you see in those numbers there, but community development, you'll see some of the transition, as you recall, in losing redevelopment. You'll also see some of the reallocation of employees through the reorganization into different parts of the overall city. This one is an important one. As you look to the far right, the numbers are all going in the right direction by way of the cuts that we've made and the efforts that we have put in place. We've dropped total city benefits, total city salaries and benefits by 9%. That's looking back over in real terms from 2009, 10 to 2012, 13. When you look at our operating costs, we've gone down 7%. The total city, the entire city budget versus personnel operating costs, 34.5% of our total city budget is spent on personnel. That's very good, but again, the tail of the tape is in the general fund. The employee count, as you see, has dropped 14.3% just in the last several years. This is just the general fund here. The maintenance and operations ISF charges, as you see, those have indeed gone up ever so slightly, but we're trying to do the right thing in that operational paradigm of putting money where it needs to be and putting money into the organizational infrastructure, as we like to call it, and at the same time, still trying to put money into the capital outlay. It would have been very easy for the city council, it's not a lot of money admittedly, but it would have been very easy for the city council to simply say, "No, we're not going to put any money into capital outlay. We're not going to reduce the general fund transfer." But you have done those things. At the same time, you've dropped personnel salaries and benefits in the general fund in real terms, and we are approaching that cost savings target that was identified at the beginning of the fiscal year. Our total annual appropriations, not including the transfers, of course, were down, which is a good thing. As I mentioned earlier, we're at 79.4% on total expenditures on personnel. Our target is 75. I think that you'll see that come into alignment with the growth of revenue, but at this point, we're evaluating to see if there are any more cuts that can be made. I can tell you that all of our employees, and you'll see on our performance indicators, we are hitting our numbers, and I think we've found that sweet spot within the organization for the size of the organization. Employee count in the general fund is down 10%. We talk about, this is an interesting slide. If you look to the lower right-hand corner, 18.1% of our total salaries, of our total, and this is without benefit roll-up, because it's hard to, because of the public safety inclusion, go apples to apples in terms of the salary or the benefit roll-up. But when you look just at salaries, we are currently at 18.1% of management, of our total personnel cost being management. That is a drop, a serious drop, from previous years. Now, in full disclosure, we have redefined to an extent what is considered management. In the past, anyone who was part of the bargaining group, Glendale Management Association, was lumped into management, but therein you have a great deal of, not a great deal, but a number of technical and professional employees who are not truly managers for purposes of span of control and operational performance. So, for purposes of this snapshot and this report going forward, the quarterly reports that you'll see, we have realigned and redefined what management is. But that really didn't take out too many folks. What really has shifted that number down to 18% has been the restructuring that the council has allowed. When I've heard folks talk about the number of people that were lost in the reorganization and the retirement incentives, I have to tell you, a great deal of them and the ones that were not replaced were indeed in management. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the tail of the tape in terms of how many employees, full-time employees that we have had in the organization, you have to go back to '01, 2000, 2001 to get even below 1,700, and you have to get back to 1999, 2000 to even approach the numbers that we're in right now. Yet, we've added many, many more services, and we provide a great deal more service, and high-quality service, I would submit to you, than we have ever before. It's a hackneyed line, to be sure, but we are working much smarter than ever before. And with that, I'll have John very quickly take you through the performance indicators.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council. As we did in the first quarter, I'd like to quickly try to walk you through our various different performance indicators and department dashboards. The one thing you'll notice that's different this time around is each department actually has a dashboard attached to it. On the dashboards, we've broken it down into three separate sections. On the left, upper left, you'll have the various different funding sources for the department. This specifically includes all funds, not just the general fund. On the upper right is the personnel counts. It breaks it down by executives, managers, and non-managers, both with a percentage and an actual count of the employees. And it also includes the strategic goals that were defined by the city manager and department head at the beginning of the year.
And were included as part of the budget adoption, that those departments are being held accountable to.
Specifically, with administrative services, I provided you with just a quick snapshot of five of many of the performance indicators we have listed for them in the report. We have members of the departments within the audience. If you have any questions, we can have them come up and answer any of them. But if you want to focus on number one and number two, the number of employees with open P-cards continues to decrease, as is the average P-card purchase amount, and the citywide personnel cost continues to increase specifically. We're at about 46% of where we were last year at the same time. Again, for the city attorney's office, we have the same dashboard, total of 18 employees. And on the city attorneys, the number of claims received has gone down slightly, and the number of claims closed has increased significantly. And the average cost for claims, if you notice, has increased significantly from quarter one to quarter two. The reason for that was actually a single settlement at the amount of about $300,000 that skewed those numbers a bit. So, we anticipate that barring any unforeseen changes, that number will start to equalize again in the third and fourth quarters. City clerk's office, dashboard, seven employees. And with the city clerk's office, the number of public records requests has increased slightly, but if you look at the total of this year so far versus all of last year, we're only at about 25% for the entire year. So, unless that increases significantly in the last two quarters, I don't anticipate that we'll have quite as many public records requests as we did last year. Filming permits, we've issued a number of more in this particular quarter, and as I indicated in the first quarter, the number of special event permits issued decreased, which is typical of the colder months. People just don't want to have special events out in the rain. And the city clerk's, city treasurer's office, they have five employees within their operation. And with this one, I'd like to focus on number two and number three, the total investment earnings per quarter. In this quarter, it decreased a little bit, and if you noticed, the reason for that is about a 14-basis-point reduction in the rate of return in the city's portfolio, just indicative of what's going on out there in the finance world. With community development, that again is theirs. They have 98.24 employees, two executives within the operation, and 24 managers, right around that 25% manager point we were talking about. And the three that I'd like to focus on here is the number of Section 8 rental assistance vouchers. It's an issue that we deal with frequently within not only the city manager's office, but within housing as well. The number of vouchers, again, increased a little bit. That doesn't necessarily mean that we received any additional housing vouchers from HUD. That could just be, it's more than likely, that we accepted more portable tenants or portable vouchers from other housing agencies. And then, numbers two and three are somewhat related. The total number of building permits issued did decrease, as did the total valuation, and it appears that the total valuation continues to decrease because the number of, or the types of projects that we're receiving within the city are just smaller in scale. Community Services and Parks is one of the larger departments with 107 employees, and about, again, 20% consist of managers. And the few that I'd like to focus on here, number one, revenue permits. You'll notice that revenue permits decreased quite a bit since the first quarter. That doesn't necessarily translate in a reduction in the use of our facilities. Specifically, that will fluctuate from season to season, depending on what sports are being played. In this particular situation, a prime example is AYSO only being required to pull one revenue permit or just one permit, but they get to utilize the facilities on an ongoing basis. So, it looks like we may be issuing less permits, but the fields are still in use at the same rate. Contract classes and recreation classes, again, did decrease. The reason for those is many of those classes start in the first quarter, go off into the second quarter. There's really no purpose in starting new classes in the second quarter when the first ones haven't finished, because you want to have the attendance. So, that's fairly typical and was expected. And finally, if you look at the very last one, the average starting wage for Rodrigo Job Center participants increased by about $5 an hour. The reason for that is there was a number of people who completed the program and were placed into, they graduated from nursing and digital entertainment, not graduated, they completed or entered in those fields. Those fields typically tend to pay a little bit higher wage. Fire department, 211 employees. Their management count for that amount of employees is only about 6.6%, or a total of only 14 managers, $64 million budget. And with respect to fire, you'll notice that the total number of calls for services, tracking as expected. The average turnaround time for plan check submittal, for us to complete it, continues to decrease. We started at 49 for all of, 49 days for the 11th, 12th fiscal year. We are down to right around two weeks for an average turnaround of a plan check. And if you'll notice that number five, the total overtime hours worked, did increase a bit from the first quarter. We're right around 55% for this particular fiscal year so far. Department's aware of it and tracking it closely, as we discussed earlier. GWP, 331 employees, 13.9% are managers, $266 million budget. Number one, the water produced from Rodrigo Basin, fairly consistent, on track to reaching the same amounts as last year. Number of water main breaks has decreased from the first quarter and significantly better than last year. But you'll notice that the purchased power cost per kilowatt-hour did increase. But if you look at the far right, you'll notice that it's fairly consistent still with what last year's average number was. And number seven is the number of transformer failures. We've already exceeded all of last year's. The department, again, is aware of that and is monitoring their infrastructure closely. Human Resources Department, $44 million budget, 20, almost 21 employees, and about 24% are managers. You'll notice here, the total citywide management to non-management employee count is right around 13% for the entire city. Again, I need to make a disclaimer on this particular slide. If you look back at your first quarter slides, those numbers are a little bit different because of the methodology we were using in calculating those numbers. We're confident that these are the actual numbers on a moving-forward basis, so this will be the baseline from this point forward.
And these are actual numbers, not necessarily budget numbers?
These are actual numbers. The total number of employee applications filed has already surpassed all, within the first two quarters, all of the employee applications we received for last year. The reason for that is we recently implemented the NeoGov system, which makes it much simpler for people to not only create an account, save their resume, and submit applications with, for various different job postings we have in the city. Going down to the bottom, number of workers' compensation claims has decreased, but the median incurred per open workers' comp claim has increased. That number fluctuates. That's primarily dependent on the types of claims that we receive and what the medical costs are to deal with those. But it's not much, not much big of a difference. Information Services, 48 employees, about 8.3% are managers, and about $26 million budget. There really wasn't a whole lot of changes or fluctuations or any kind of real trend to talk about in their performance indicators, aside from there was a slight reduction in the number of website visitors, so we'll see what happens in the next quarter. Library with-- Library with a total of 50 employees, 10 percent being managers, about 17, almost $18 million budget. You'll notice, number one, the total circulation per capita has decreased, but if you were to look at year-to-year comparisons, the total circulation has actually increased about 19 percent from this time last year, despite the closure of Brand Library due to the renovations. Specifically, one major trend that we noticed, looking at the numbers, was the circulation of eBooks was about 40 percent or by about 1,500 books.
Circulation of what?
eBooks.
eBooks.
From this time last year. And you'll notice that there was a significant reduction in the average children's and adult programs attendance. That was a conscious decision made by the department due to budget and staffing reductions. There was just less programs offered in the first and second quarters. And Management Services is by far the, well, it's the only department with four executives listed there. Total of 26 employees and 15 percent.
You're counting us as employees?
What's that?
You're counting the council as employees?
We do budget you in our budget.
That is a terrible mistake in my opinion.
If so, I think you're violating.
Got some code against that.
Again, in Management Services, not much of a big difference or trend to talk about, aside from the average length of time for personnel investigations continues to go down, based on the fact that some of the investigations we're dealing with just aren't as complex as some of the other ones that we dealt with earlier in the first quarter. PD has a total of 351 employees, about 5 percent of them being managers and 94 percent being non-managers, 94.7 percent. They have a $77 million budget, roughly. You'll notice here that the total Part I and II, I'm sorry, the total Part I violent and property crimes increased a bit over here, but overall, there's been a 12 percent decrease compared to this time last year. If you look at number four, total DUI arrests made, there was about a 40 arrest reduction there. So, we can reasonably conclude that some of the DUI enforcement is making an impact. And the number of traffic incidents involving pedestrians has slightly increased, but we're actually at about 58 percent of where we would expect to be, just a little bit higher than expected. And finally, Public Works, one of the other, the largest departments, 298 employees, 15, I'm sorry, 10.5 percent of them being managers, $228 million budget plus. And on this one, there really wasn't, believe it or not, with Public Works having about 62 or 68 total key performance indicators, there really wasn't a whole lot of fluctuation. So, our initial estimates were fairly consistent. I will point to the number of miles between mechanical system failures and the B-line system continues to increase, which is a good thing, but that's really due to the fact that we just have newer equipment. And the total lane miles of street resurfaced, I indicated in the first quarter that there was zero, because we generally use the first and second quarters for the planning, the bidding, and award of the contracts, and the work generally takes place in the more pleasant months. Clearly, we've started doing some of that paving work, so there was about one mile of street resurfaced, and we anticipate that's going to increase in the third and fourth quarters. And that concludes my quick presentation. Again, we have people in the audience who can answer any specific questions, or I can try.
Questions? Okay, I have one. Speaker Carr, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Well, let's see how much I can accomplish in three minutes after listening to this long presentation. First, I'll start with a positive. Mr. Ochoa, I think the idea of creating these performance scorecards is outstanding. I see an improvement on these every time you presented them. I do believe that this approach really would lead to some significant improvements overall in the city. I'd like to state a couple of things. How do we improve the information that you disseminate to the public? I will start with one basic one, that maybe you use larger fonts and larger print on what is displayed to the public. I don't think they would be able to discern anything from it. But I also suggest that you provide some numbers that might be more tangible, practical for the public to use, for example, such as a cost per dwelling. An example would be, what is the cost of policing overall per dwelling? And then, provide comparative year-to-year as to what those trends are. Because as some of you know, the cost of policing in Glendale, in an eight-year span between 2001 and 2008, more than doubled. That's, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. Police and fire combined, a safety doubled between the years 2001 through 2008. So, I think that a trend line is really important for the public to see how much these trends have impacted overall, the overall cost of running the city. I think that there's some significant improvements here. For example, the improvement on the ratio of management to subordinate employees is an excellent improvement in the trends. I see a reduction in the turnaround time per building plan check, for example, but in another part of the report, it does say that each particular project is a lot more, is a lot smaller. So, I figure there's a relationship between those two. I believe that you need to include more than just the general fund, that the internal service fund costs and trends should be presented, such as the health care cost trends for the past 10 years, for each one of the past 10 years, worker compensation cost trends for the past 10 years. Also, the expected future payments to CalPERS. You know, back in 2001, we used to pay about $7 million in costs towards the pension system. Last year, it was $30 million. So, I think those are pertinent. With regard to other key performance indicators, I'd like to see something to the extent that gives us a little bit more, an additional dimension to this. For example, if we had the number of arrests, it would be nice to know how many of those arrests are actually closed, or perhaps how many of those arrests actually lead towards a conviction. With regard to Public Works, street, number of streets resurfaced, 13.3 miles. But if you look at the CAFER, the actual reconstruction of streets is less than a mile every year. So, I think that maybe some better numbers are needed in these reports, but it's a big improvement over the past. Thanks.
Okay, any questions or comments?
No? Nice.
I want to talk about the auditors who are here, just in terms of some of the confusion about general accounting principles and how it affects or doesn't affect our transfer from our, which our charter says has to come from the surplus fund. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Well, before they do, just to make sure that, to set the context of the discussion that we had had, and I think to the auditor's credit, and we just refer you as "the auditors", by the way.
Yes, the auditors.
Really, what was a discussion about this ongoing dialogue about the general fund transfer and how that is made to the city. The discussion that was being had back in December, I think, from their perspective, was somewhat a miscommunication where they did not quite understand the question that was necessarily being asked, looking at the four different funds that make up the electric fund, looking at those as, literally, four individual funds versus one overall enterprise fund that we, that under GAAP would be known as the electric fund. When you look at the balance sheet, you know, for the GWP, particularly as it relates to electric, you know, you would have to look really at each one of those funds as being insufficient in the definition, the accounting definition of what a fund truly is. I mean, I won't play an accountant on TV, but I would defer to Mr. Elliott for the detail there. And then, if you gentlemen would care to comment, certainly you can, to clarify the statement that you had made previously.
Thank you, Scott. Again, just to reiterate, the push and I think the confusion has been is what the charter says in terms of the fund makeup and the four that Scott referred to, the depreciation fund, the revenue fund, the surplus fund, and the sinking fund. While we maintain those funds for accounting purposes, for our own use to comply with the charter, we, in a sense, put those all together to call the electric fund when we present it in the comprehensive annual financial statement. If we do not do that, each of those four funds fail the definition of generally accepted accounting principles and the definition of what a fund is. So, that's why, for presentation purposes in the CAFER, we put all those operations together and call it the electric fund.
And what is a fund by definition?
It's a set of self-balancing accounts. That's the simplistic versions in terms of what it's defined as per GAAP. As we move forward and as we discuss the transfer and the confusion of the charter says it has to come out of the surplus fund, well, from a GAAP perspective, the surplus fund really is the balance sheet. How you, to comply with GAAP, to make a transfer, it has to be deemed as a nonreciprocal transfer, i.e. in expense. It's an expense off the P and L income statement in most lingo, and that is really what is the revenue fund. So, it differs from the charter. Charter says it needs to come out of the surplus fund. To comply with GAAP, it's really booked in the income statement as an expense, transferred out to the general fund. So, there's conflict there. So, this is the genesis of why we've asked or tried to put forth clarification in the charter, to make the charter in parallel with generally accepted accounting principles.
Just to be clear, why can't it come out of the surplus fund?
Because it would be contrary to GAAP, and if we did that...
Why is that? What is GAAP trying to stop?
Generally accepted accounting principles, again, a transfer of this type has to flow through operations. So, in the revenue fund, revenues are generated, we deduct the expenses. That's how we report the income statement. So, to book that properly, we charge that as an outflow or an expense in the revenue fund. The charter says it needs to come out of the surplus fund, which, if you take that literally, would be a charge right to the equity portion of the balance sheet. That's something you just don't do.
What happens if we do it?
Well, if we tried to comply with the charter and didn't comply with GAAP, we would likely get a qualified opinion or an adverse opinion, depending on what the circumstances were, which would, you know, what we strive to have is an unqualified opinion. That's a clean opinion, the best opinion you can have. Absent that, if we had a qualified or subject to adverse opinion, that would render this financial statement not to the highest quality we would want to have. It's not in compliance with GAAP. That could impact our bond ratings when we go out for bonds. There's a number of things it could impact. So, that's really the push for us to try and clarify the charter in terms of getting it in alignment with generally accepted accounting principles. There was some confusion when we presented the CAFER back in December, and we just wanted to clarify that as we move forward.
And further, the charter also refers to the transfer being taken of 25 percent of the operating revenue, which also adds a layer of confusion until and unless you look at the way that the transfer had been calculated and the transfer had been moved, then it does start to come into focus much as the way that the city has been operating. It's just unclear in the antiquated Byzantine language of the charter. I mean, and to your question, I can ask our two, the auditors, to come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council and staff. Personally, we couldn't have said it any better to answer those questions. I think both Mr. Elliott and Mr. Ochoa did an excellent job reiterating the fact that in December, there was a miscommunication, and the explanation of GAAP was done really eloquently this evening. So, with that, I'll take any other questions, but there's really nothing more that we can say to clarify this issue.
Question, question, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect to Mr. Elliott, you said it was to comply with the charter would result in us receiving a qualified...
Opinion.
Opinion.
Correct.
Is it even more clear to say that to comply with the charter would be wrong under today's generally accepted accounting principles? I mean, can we say it's right and wrong? I mean, aside from talking about qualifications and all this, am I speaking out of turn? Would I be misstating if I said that to comply with the charter would be wrong in light of today's generally accepted accounting principles?
I don't know if it's really a question of right or wrong. It's a question of, do you want a clean opinion in the way the charter is written? To go and make that transfer out of a fund that's really not an operating fund would not get you that opinion. So, right or wrong, was it written? It was written a long time ago, and...
I mean, GAAP is a set of standards, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, to comply with the charter would not be complying with the standards?
That would be more correct, yes.
Okay, well, let's say it's wrong. I mean, if the speed limit says 50 and I'm going 60, I'm not complying with the law. I'm wrong by not complying with that. Now, whether you describe GAAP as a law, it might not be an ordinance, a statute, a codified rule. This is a standard within the industry that is widely accepted, is it not? In fact, it's a standard that you judge our actions by when you give us a qualified or an unqualified letter of approval.
That you need to adhere to GAAP to get an unqualified opinion, that is correct.
Okay, I'm going to call it wrong. I'm going to say that complying with the charter is wrong. And I understand you have to couch the opinions in a more precise way, in a more delicate manner, but as I understand it, to comply with the charter is wrong. And that is why Proposition V is going forward.
Absolutely.
To comply with GAAP.
Correct.
Now, I'm starting to get.
Any other comments?
Any other comments on any of the other items of the report, sir?
Yes.
Good report. Mr. Manu Kim.
I disagree, of course, with some of the statements, but I'm not going to delve into that. I can certainly sit here and discuss the issue. However, in my opinion, you're giving, just to make it clear, you're giving an opinion on the report that is given for external purposes. So, and our internal accounting could be structured in such a way where management can abide by whatever that has been stated in the charter. Is the statement for internal management, is the statement that you audit, is that reported for internal management purposes or is it for external?
The one that we audit is for external purposes in your comprehensive annual financial report.
Thank you. And if I internally want to account for different ways within the management, management has the option of allocating things any way that it sees fit for the management of and the operation of the company, but for external reporting purposes, they have to abide by GAAP.
Not sure that's a trick question, but I'm saying...
Well, but I think therein lies...
Right, I understand, but I want to clarify the issue of right and wrong. So, if management decides that it is more beneficial in the operations of any entity to account for certain items in a certain way so that they are better able to get the results of their operation and their opinion, however, for external reporting, they will go with GAAP. Is that acceptable? Would that be acceptable?
I think you need to decide internally how you want to see something internally, whether you want to have it in accordance with GAAP or not. That's your decision.
Thank you.
For us to issue.
That's what I want to address, is that. It's not, as you said when you first responded to the question whether it's wrong or right, there is no really wrong or right. There is reporting based on GAAP and reporting based on internal management purposes.
And I think to tie it back home, and I think that's where, in fairness to our auditors, when they were here in December, answering that set of questions, I think from a management perspective, why wouldn't, I think, our push and the impetus behind Measure B is...
And that's understandable. That's understandable. That's up to the management, and I think you're within your purview to ask the community to say, this is not working for our internal purposes, and we need to change it, and that's understandable. But it's not a matter of wrong or right. So, thank you. I do want to comment, that is all I have.
Let me just break into this discussion between the two counting parties here, but isn't it also more transparent, well, three, isn't it also more transparent to the public if we do it with this idea of the external...
Well, part of the issue is the charter names, and it's the inconsistency of what the charter has, is it has 10 named funds. We have 65 funds, so there's inconsistency there. We create funds as needed to comply with all sorts of things, federal grants. We separate out federal monies. We separate out state monies. General fund by definition is always the king fund, if you will. Everything goes in there unless there's a reason not to have it. Enterprise funds are set up for a specific purpose. Yes, we do maintain all the charter funds that we have in the charter for the electric operation. We put them all together to report on the electric fund as an enterprise unit. Similarly, though, we have the refuse fund, we have the sewer fund as a single fund. They're not different components of, you know, revenues and surpluses. It's just a enterprise fund because they were created after the charter was written. So, you know, the flexibility is not there in term, or it is there in some aspects, is that we create funds as we need them, but we have these antiquated descriptions in the charter of which we still abide by that are inconsistent with GAAP. And I would agree with Councilmember Manukin, is yes, we can structure reports however we want for internal purposes. When it comes to producing the CAFR, the comprehensive annual financial report, we have to comply with GAAP, or we're subject to having a qualified or something less than an unqualified opinion, which is the highest you can get.
And from that management perspective, our argument would be, then why not have one standard and let that standard be the standard?
Right.
Well, and also, as Mayor Quintero said, I don't think it's very transparent to do your record-keeping and your accounting in one way internally in a different way when you present it to the public. It just doesn't seem right to me either.
I don't disagree, but it's up to management.
Well, I wanted to make a comment about the whole presentation, actually, not relating to you, but relating to the report that the city manager and his staff presented. I also wanted to say that I am very pleased with the presentation. I think we have come a long way in what was done in the past and what is being presented today. And I know there are always ways to make the report better, but I think at this point, the key performance indicators that are being presented, the staffing that is being presented, the dashboard that is being presented, I think it greatly improves on what was done and is, I'm very pleased, actually, of this report. It just, thank you for going the extra mile and presenting this stuff. I know it's difficult. The fonts might have been a little smaller than I would have liked to see as well because I had to put my glasses on to read it here as well. But I think the organization as a whole is on the right track. I want to commend all the executives, all the staff, and everyone, the work that they're doing. And I just think that it's a great report. It's an improvement to what was done last time, and I think as the organization improves and these numbers get more mature, we'll get more comparables and we can compare apples to apples and get better numbers and better indicators about where the organization is going and how the organization is performing, which, in the overall picture, will give you better tools to manage the organization. So, congratulations, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, all I can do is, I can't add anything to what's been said, but thank you, staff, for staying here tonight till 8:00. See if we had any questions of any of you. And with that, could I move 8B1?
Second.
It'll take a second, and Mr. Najarian wants to comment.
The performance indicators were well structured, well organized. However, I would like to perhaps get a particular department every two weeks, if we could. We could even put it on consent, just to slow down a little bit and see where it's at, and give us a chance to ask some questions as we go along. So have this be a continual process rather than every quarter. Is this a quarterly issue then? So that way we can, you know, as I'm thinking about one department, the next department's coming up, and I think we lose a little bit of focus. This way we can really concentrate on one or two departments each time. And I guess we could even put it on the consent calendar, and should there be a particular question, it can be raised at the...
So to highlight each and...
A couple, one or two departments each time. There's what, about 10? What do we have, 10, 11?
Fifteen.
Can you do that, or do you evaluate them all at once?
At the end of the year, we evaluate everybody side by side by side, but for purposes, for example, this being, if I understand you correctly, sir, this is the mid-year, so in the next couple of weeks, we would separately give you library arts and culture, and you could walk through that. And because the report's already done, recognizing it's a mid-year report, we can do that.
And there may be some questions on public works as we go along, and other two weeks, another particular department, city attorney, treasurer, clerk, et cetera, as we go through. And there may be no questions at all, but just time to pause as we review the information. And then we'll be doing it, I think, on a continual basis, wouldn't be overloaded every quarter with just a huge amount of info that for reasons of time or for reasons of clutter in our thought processes, be able to perhaps ask some pertinent questions.
That's a great suggestion. We can certainly do that. Again, recognizing that you may be getting somebody's mid-year report in March, right? Because we just kind of parcel them out that way? Yeah, no, I think we can certainly do that.
Mr. Ted and I have a different take on performance indicators. I think they're made for Mr. Ochoa and his upper staff to find out what the entire city is doing and take corrective actions. I don't need to see them because he runs the city, and if he sees something wrong, he's going to fix it. He doesn't need my opinion, hey, what about that? I don't like that, fix it. That's what we hire him for. So, and I want quarterly. I don't want to get midstream in a quarter. That's not helping me at all. And to get in debates on it, I mean, that's Mr. Ochoa's job. Look at the indicators and see where his staff is performing or not. Mr. Takhtalian said that tonight. There's different things he's looking at with staff, and they'll correct them. Now, that's just my take. I don't want to get into a debate. 801 now, just my take. Leave it at that. I made a motion.
And there's a second? It's my job.
Motion and a second.
This is...
Further comments?
8B1.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Beaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
I'll move 8B2.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Thank you very much, staff.
Mr. Mayor, per previous agreement, thank you.
Next, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Okay. Mo Rasmussen, followed by Tony Passarella.
Mayor, oh, there he is, over there. The City Council, this is my first time doing this, so I'm a little nervous. Please excuse that. My name is Mo Rasmussen. I am very excited to be here, kind of watching democracy in action. Pretty exciting, lot going on tonight in this world. I'm a longtime resident, lived here actually my whole life, raised my boys here, all have come through the Glendale Unified School District, and I'm going to use my glasses because I'm getting older. I just wanted to say that I love this city, raised my family here, love living here, and I'm proud to be a Glendalean. I know I'm preaching to the choir. I know you all love this city, too. The work you do on the council continues, contributes each and every day to the incredible life we enjoy. So what's my problem, you ask? I have one request, one that I speak, that I think speaks to the community at large. Oh, excuse me, gosh, I'm a little nervous. And on a very meaningful level, will Glendale be the city that does not support gun shows on city property? I'm proud that my state has some of the toughest gun laws in the country. I understand that guns will not be purchased at the show, taken out of the building. I understand that the gun loophole has also been addressed in California. I understand that this is a reputable company that puts on these shows, and there have never been any problems. That is great. That said, this show sits on one of the busiest streets in our city, directly across from Glendale College and right next door to the Viduco Park. This is a very large, there is a very large, bright digital sign that sits in front of the Civic Center, alerting and advertising that Glendale sells guns, come on in and purchase some. I know that there is not a single person in this room tonight who has not asked what I can do about the increase in gun violence in our society. We have, on average, in the United States, 80 deaths by guns a day. Last year in 2012, according to the Sacramento Bee, 750,000 guns were sold in California legally. I am so pleased that you have done the right thing, taken the important first step for asking for a new local law to be drafted. That is great. Now I hope that you follow through and pass the law. I am so grateful for your leadership and am counting on you to follow through on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony Passarella, followed by Eileen Young.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff and viewing public. My name is Tony Passarella. I have an immediate presentation. Artie?
I'm a primary care pediatrician who no longer supports water fluoridation. Pediatricians like myself are taught to pay very close attention to the proper weight-based dosage for each drug, and to make sure that our patients do not receive more of a drug than is necessary or safe. But unfortunately, when it comes to fluoride, this basic precaution is not being followed. In fact, the dose of fluoride that's supposedly effective in preventing dental cavities is very close to the dose that, according to the Environmental Protection Agency, can cause harm for some children. So it has a very narrow therapeutic window. Since children now receive fluoride from so many different sources, it's virtually impossible for a doctor to determine exactly how much fluoride each child is actually getting. And if you can't determine the amount of fluoride, then you can't determine the dose. And if you can't determine the dose of fluoride, then you can't determine safety. As a pediatrician, I am deeply concerned that fluoride is not good for babies and that they are at risk for harmful side effects. The most clearly visible side effect is dental fluorosis, a permanent staining of the teeth caused by fluoride's interference with normal tooth development. There's a significant number of children in the United States who now have some form of dental fluorosis. According to the Centers for Disease Control, dental fluorosis affects 41% of teenagers. That's millions of children who now have a visible form of chronic fluoride toxicity. As a pediatrician, I'm concerned that fluoride could also affect tissues and organs that are not visible, like the bones, the thyroid, and the brain. My concern is based in part on a large body of research finding that modestly elevated levels of fluoride can reduce a child's intelligence, especially if there's a deficient intake of iodine. Children are disproportionately affected by fluoride for several key reasons. They receive a greater fluoride dose per body weight when compared to adults. They have far more fluoride incorporated into their skeleton than adults. They have a lower kidney excretion of fluoride into their urine, meaning more fluoride gets reabsorbed back into their bloodstream where it can bioaccumulate. And their developing brains are more susceptible to fluoride's toxicity. This can affect their educational achievement, and these unique characteristics of children can no longer be ignored. I'm also concerned by research findings showing that dental fluorosis is higher in the black community, even the more severe forms, where the teeth can start to erode and develop black and brown stains. This health disparity and environmental injustice will need to be addressed. Even though federal agencies recommended lowering fluoride concentration in water down to 0.7 parts per million, that reduction is slow to implement in each jurisdiction, and frankly, it's not enough. Over-the-counter water filters can't remove the fluoride. So my heart goes out to pregnant women, seniors, those with kidney, thyroid, and other health conditions who can't afford a water purification process to remove the fluoride. They shouldn't even be put in this position. Because water is for everyone, but fluoride is not. Therefore, it's my professional recommendation that we discontinue water fluoridation in the United States. I know I don't want to drink fluoridated water, and I commend residents of Portland, Oregon, for fighting hard for the right to keep fluoride out of their water, and also states like New Hampshire and cities like Milwaukee for including infant advisories on their water bills. This past May, New York City held their first children's anti-fluoride rally. Sooner or later, you, too, will have to make some very important decisions about fluoride, and so it's better to be safe and responsible now so we won't have to pay for it later. It's all about prevention. Thank you.
Remember that quote from last week? I'll just remind you if you forgot it, Adolf Hitler quote, "If you tell a lie loud enough and long enough, the people will believe it." So what I'm going to do here at council over the next several weeks, I'm going to tell the truth loud enough and long enough, and maybe the council and the viewing public will believe it. Thank you. My name is Tony Passarella.
Eileen Young, followed by Richard Garner.
Good afternoon, evening, sorry, I'm really nervous. I've learned a lot about city council tonight, and I am really glad it's not me up there. If I ever think that I want to run for council, I'm lying. Going through that budget was eye-opening. Anyway, I'm a longtime resident of Glendale and specifically Glen Oaks Canyon, and I'm not a public speaker, and I usually just like to hope for the best in most situations. I was never a fan of the gun show being in Glendale, but nothing bad ever happened, so I didn't do anything or say anything. But the shooting at Sandy Hook kind of shook me. I attended a candlelight vigil at Glen Oaks Park. I thought that might be enough to just kind of sate my need to do something. It wasn't. I joined the Coalition for a Better Glendale, and I wrote emails to most of you expressing my concern, thinking that would be enough, and it wasn't either. So then I started paying attention to what happens at gun shows and how many people come into the town and what happens, and it's crazy right now. So I'm concerned for my hometown. So now I'm in front of you with my voice shaking and thanking you for going down the path of stopping the gun shows at the Civic. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much, and join the Coalition for Better Glendale.
You, Richard Garner. Garner has left. Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Potem Najarian, members of the City Council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. From time to time, when I've, actually, I would say that for most of the, I don't know, four or 500 times that I come before you, I generally have come in order to expand or rebut a statement that was oftentimes made from the dais that I needed to correct or at least give it another point of view. So I remember during Mr. Jim Starbuck's reign here as a city manager, I've heard a discussion concerning how Proposition 13 had negatively impacted the city's finances. And on a couple of occasions, when I went to the Glendale Unified School District, I heard somewhat the same thing. And so I decided to check to see what has actually transpired. So this is a, Mr. Ochoa, this is a report, a presentation that I made several years ago, and I updated a few of the slides. So let me start with this one right here. This is about the Glendale property tax revenues between 1978, when Proposition 13 was passed, to 2011. Has it constrained Glendale's property tax revenues? Here's a comparison. I've, actually, I should have updated that slide to 2011. Inflation rate has increased by 245% since then, and the property tax revenue change is 1,100 in the city of Glendale, primarily as a result of so many homes that were converted to apartment buildings. And of course, as people age and die, the properties get reassessed. And as it progresses, you're going to find that eventually most of these properties are going to be changing hands very frequently, ergo, increasing the new appraisal value and increasing your property tax rate. your property tax rate. So what has happened to Glendale? We had a property tax of revenues of $6.7 million back in 1978, and back in 2012, we had 2011, almost $80 million, and that, of course, includes all the redevelopment tax increment fund. But what has happened to the Glendale salaries and wage trends? Now, the reason why this report stops at 2008, because I didn't have a chance to update it with more recent data, but I presented it to the City Council back in 2009, and this information is taken from the W-3 Form, which is the summary of your payroll. And as you can see, between just an eight-year span, we had a 50% increase in salaries and benefits, and not looking at all of the potential increases in the unfunded liabilities that was being increased during that time. How about mid-management employees? And by the way, I have the workforce demographic reports with me, in case you want to see that, and that's where I got the data. Employed in 1998, 147, employed in 2008, 233, for a 50, I'm sorry, that number is probably wrong, more like 54% increase. So if you were to take then, in addition to those trends, the annual pension cost in 2001, $7.8 million in the actual outlays, and 2012, $30 million. So we have an additional experience of $22 million. Now, all things being equal, not taking into account the fact that we had a severe economic downturn, but had it been just adjusted for inflation, our pension cost would have been $10 million. In other words, the changes made in 2001 and 2005, changing the pension structure, put us at a significant risk that in the event of a downturn, economic downturn, that occurs generally once every 10 years, if not more, that's where our money's going. So these are the trends, and this is the information that I come before. These are not lies, this is information that comes right from your own documents, and this is what I have done for several years. Taken information that is pronounced from the dais, go back and look at the financial reports, see what actually shows, and oftentimes I have to use the California Public Records Act to get deep into the data. So for several years, I made requests to get access to the employees' salaries. I was denied, until the California Supreme Court basically ruled that that information needed to be presented to the public. We made requests with regard to bonuses, also that information was denied, and so on. So I've used the California Public Records Act to get at and dig into the data so that I can present another point of view, another set of data that the public ought to know. I just want that for clarification, because that is the reason why I'm running for City Council. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion. Mr. Najarian?
I have some new business, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city attorney is hereby authorized to initiate litigation against the owners of 1239 South Glendale Avenue property and the owners, promoters of the proposed Cannabis Cup event advertised to be held on the subject property on February 16th and 17th, 2013. The purpose of the litigation is to enjoin a public nuisance. Enjoin a public nuisance. Among other requests for relief, the city attorney is authorized to seek immediate injunctive relief as necessary to prevent violations of the municipal code and public nuisances at or on the subject property, including any appeals or writ proceedings as may be necessary and appropriate. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Move to adjourn?
We are adjourned in memory of Frank Luna.
Thank you.